The Albert Lee City Council for Monday, October 27, 2025. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Christensen.
Here.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Howland.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Van Beek.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
And Mayor Murray.
Here, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everybody tonight, whether you're here in person or online, we're glad you're here. Item three tonight is ceremonial items, and the first one is an oath of office for two of our fighter, firefighters, Kio Two and Blair Bonnerup. So we'll ask Carla to come down. First, we're going to ask Chief Lachesky to come up and give us a little talk.
Well, good evening, Councilman Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here and present Blair Bonnerup and Kio Two to you guys for ceremonial pinning and swearing in. It's been an honor to work with these two for the time we've had with them. They're a couple of interesting young gentlemen. Just to get to know them a little bit, Blair Bonnerup comes to us from Howlandale Fire. That's where he got his start, was on Howlandale Fire Department, had quite a few years there. Matter of fact, when I was indicating to his chief that we were hiring him, he was upset with me because he thought he wasn't going to be able to continue to help out his community. With our full-time members are able to continue to help out our community, and Blair continues to do that. He's had a lot of interesting jobs in his young life. He's been a person that puts on a scuba diving type suit and dives underwater and welds. He's worked for companies, building machines where he designs it, builds a machine, and then go take it to the facility and teaches the people how to use it. So from birth to inception, everything with the machine. So he's been a very valuable asset to our department, great personality, and just somebody that's a go-getter and goes after it. So really appreciate him being part of the department. Kio Two comes to us from our paid-on-call ranks. Saw an ad, decided to show up one day, accidentally signed the wrong line, and got pulled into our fire academy. He's always got a smile on his face. We realized that he was meant for the career fire service the day we went down for one of the Corin festivals. It was a blast, went down there. Deputy Chief Bourbon, it was Captain Bourbon at the time, was there. He was his captain, and he walked over with a bowl of noodles for Bart. Anything about Bart, Bart does not like spicy things, but he also will not turn down, if he starts eating, he will finish it out of respect. Handed him the bowl of noodles, and Bart's like, is this spicy? And he goes, no, 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 not spicy, not spicy at all, laughing the whole time as Bart takes the first bite. So we knew right away he was meant to be part of the department. But both of these young men embody what we expect at Albert Lee Fire Rescue, which is part of our mission statement, that we're committed to help people and do what is right today and in the future. So at this point, I'd like to have Carla come down and swear these two young gentlemen in.
All right, so raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kio Two.
I, Blair Bonnerup.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And to faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of firefighter.
Discharge the duties of firefighter.
Within and for the city of Albert Lee Fire Rescue.
Within and for the city of Albert Lee. Albert Lee Fire Rescue.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Glad you're here.
And I'm excited to see these young families and these little kids. That's wonderful.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Did you just make the mother love them cry?
I think they took them back from the guy holding them.
All right, next on the list is a proclamation on Crash Responders Safety Week. Whereas Crash Responder Safety Week observed November 17 through 21, 2025, is a national initiative led by the U.S. Department of Transportation's Federal Highway Administration to bring attention to the critical work of traffic incident responders and promote safe driving practices around emergency scenes. And whereas every day, police officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, tow operators, and highway maintenance workers risk their lives while responding to roadway incidents, and whereas of September 15, 2025, nineteen first responders have lost their lives nationwide this year being struck by incidents while performing their duties on roadways. And whereas Minnesota's move-over law requires motorists to move over one full lane when approaching stopped emergency or maintenance vehicles with flashing lights activated and to slow down if a full lane change is not possible. And whereas the city of Albert Lee recognizes that public awareness and responsible driver behavior are critical to keeping both responders and motorists alike safe, and whereas the theme for the 10th anniversary of Crash Responder Safety Week, "Safety Starts With You, Move Over and Slow Down", emphasizes that every driver can help save lives by staying alert, moving over, and slowing down. And whereas the city of Albert Lee stands for the state of Minnesota and the U.S. Department of Transportation in support of Crash Responder Safety Week and the dedicated professionals who serve our community's safety every day. Now therefore, I, Rich Murray, Mayor of the city of Albert Lee, do hereby proclaim the week of November 17 through 21, 2025, as Crash Responder Safety Week in the city of Albert Lee, and we encourage all residents to join in recognizing and supporting our emergency responders by practicing safe driving habits around incident scenes. So we'll present this, one of the chiefs coming up, or would you guys like to come up? Is Teresa still here? Thank you, congratulations. And did somebody want to say a few words? Or, and then we're going to have Teresa come in, maybe take a picture too for the, here we go.
So I wasn't prepared to say a few words, so I will make it very brief. But we took this opportunity because it's a good chance to highlight the men and women that go out on the interstates, on the highways, and help with crashes. Crashes, as everyone's driven by, everyone wants to look and see what's happening, and they're not always looking at the road. So this is a good way to highlight what goes on, the people that respond to it, and remind people to be careful around crash scenes.
You're here getting the picture.
Should have thought of that before you came.
All right, item four on our list tonight is a public forum. I believe we have one speaker on our public forum, is that correct? All right. We have Jeff Dolan tonight, our veteran service officer. Come on up and tell us what's going on with veterans in the community, and the other reason you're here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilmen, guests, and staff, everyone listening online. Hey, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak about Operation Green Light and the meaningful initiative that Freeborn County has taken, and hopefully that Albert Lee City will soon follow. Each November, as we approach Veterans Day, we pause to recognize the men and women who have worn the uniform in armed forces, those who have served our nation, protected our freedoms, and strengthened our communities. Here in Freeborn County, we roughly have about 2,000 veterans. These are our neighbors, family members, and community leaders. Their service doesn't end when they return home, they continue to give back. There's participation in local groups like the Disabled American Veterans, the VFW, American Legions, and other veterans groups, including Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and a great new group out of Clark's Grove that's been helping a lot of veterans ride for heroes. These civic organizations and volunteer efforts make our country and our cities stronger. The impact of Freeborn County is significant. According to the most recent GDX report for 2024, veterans and their families received over $13 million in direct federal VA benefits, including $12 million in compensation and pension directly to veterans, and $1 million in dependency and indemnity compensation or pensions to their survivors. Additionally, there was $17 million in indirect benefits that came to our county through memorial educations, programs, home loans, and medical care. That's a total economic impact of over $30 million right here in Freeborn County. This is a powerful reminder of how deeply our veterans are woven into the fabric of our community. But beyond our numbers, Operation Green Light is something that's even greater. It's recognition. It's letting every veteran know that their service is seen, appreciated, and supported. This year, of course, marks the 5th anniversary of Operation Green Light in a joint effort by the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, which I belong to. From November 4th to November 11th, counties across the nations will illuminate their buildings in green and show a visible show of gratitude and unity. By shining a green light, we send a simple but powerful message, you are not forgotten, you are valued, you are home. So Freeborn County is proud to join the countries, the counties across the nation in passing a resolution to declare our participation. We will light our veterans memorial and other county buildings in green, and we encourage residents and businesses to do the same. By placing a green light in a window or a storefront during the week of November 4th through the 11th, America's counties have a longstanding and proud history of serving our nation's veterans, and the legacy continues as we work with our federal and state and local partners to ensure that our former service members have access and resources to the recognition they deserve. So as we prepare to celebrate Veterans Day and honor all those who served, I invite everyone to be the one that makes a difference and show your support. Turn a green light, let our veterans know that Albert Lee stands with them today, always, today and always. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, we appreciate you coming and speaking with us tonight, and we appreciate the service of all our veterans that we have here in our county, in our community, for the sacrifices and all that they've done for us in the past and continue to do for us every day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move along to item five, the consent and approval of agenda. A is the approval of minutes of the October 13, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Item B is approval of minutes of the October 13, 2025 Work Session. Item C is approval of minutes of the October 18, 2025 Strategic Planning Meeting. Item D is license and permits. Item E is the appointment of Pam Schmidt to the Heritage Preserv- Pres- Preservation? I wanted to say Pre- Prevention. To the Heritage Preservation Commission. And item F is the resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Counsel?
Move to approve the consent and approval of agenda, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Baker is our second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Howland, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item six is petitions, requests, and communications, we have none tonight. Item seven is unfinished business. Item eight, unfinished business, is ordinance 25-147, amending zoning and land use map from R2 to B2, 642 Marshall and 437 Bridge Avenue. This is the second reading. Security Bank Minnesota applied to rezone 642 Marshall Street and a portion of 437 Bridge Avenue, a parcel with split zoning from one to four family resident R2 to community business B2, to allow for future expansion of parking and building areas for Security Bank. A portion of 437 Bridge Avenue is already zoned B2, which eliminates the concern for spot zoning. In addition, the 2040 comprehensive plan identifies this area as commercial, which includes both large-scale and local servicing areas. Planning Commission recommends approval of this second reading. Counsel?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Baker is our second.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Counselor Van Beek, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item B is ordinance 25-148, amending zoning and the land use map from single-family residence District R1 to Interstate Development District IDD for property located at 21133 and 21135, 775th Avenue. This is the second reading. Terry Jensen, ALC, a listing broker on behalf of the property owners at 21133 and 21135, 775th Avenue, applied to rezone the properties from single-family residence R1 to Interstate Development District IDD to proactively plan for future sale and development of the properties. Property directly across Interstate I-35 is currently zoned IDD, which eliminates the concern for zone, spot zoning. Planning Commission recommends approval of this final reading. Counsel?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Christensen, is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Second by Counselor Anderson, any further discussion?
Yeah, Your Honor.
Counselor Baker?
I just want to make sure that, as I brought up last time, that there's going to be, you know, in the event that something does end up being built there, that there's proper screening to soften the look of an industrial area right across the street from residential. I just want to make sure that that's kept in focus as this goes forward.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item eight is new business. A is a public hearing regarding declaring a property without public purpose, waive Planning Commission review, and authorizing the sale of 917 South Broadway Avenue. We'll open up with a pub, with a public hearing with a staff report. This resolution is to declare the property at 917 South Broadway Avenue with the description of 34-033-0580 as no longer serving a public purpose and to authorize its sale. The property located in the B2 Business District previously housed a blighted structure that has since been demolished. This property will be divided between adjacent landowners for future business expansion, and staff recommends approval. I did receive a little additional information, which I will share with you before we ask for a motion. This property is being sold for its assessed value of $15,400. Given that the city has invested approximately $16,000 in code enforcement, demolition, and related efforts, this sale represents a favorable outcome recouping nearly the full amount expended. The property sale will be split between the owner of Kelly Plumbing and Dick Davies, each paying $7,700. They are both in need of the extra space, so it's a win-win for them. Kelly Plumbing may consider expansion in the future, and Dick Davies is looking for additional parking for his apartment building that he invested in a couple doors down. Counsel?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Baker, is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Second by Counselor Anderson, any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Counselor Howland?
And since the city manager's here, I don't know, this can be answered, but I tried looking at this on Google Maps to determine what this property is. So just so I'm clear on this, so this is just to the south of the old Abess Sewing? Property, is that, I don't know if that's correct? So it's an empty lot now?
It is an empty lot, yes.
Okay, yeah, so the one just to the north, that's the old Abess Sewing.
And am I correct that this was a property that we tore down? Is that right? Yes, city engineer, Steve Yonkey?
It was a business, it was a business property that was there, it wasn't a residential home, right?
I believe it was a home, wasn't it?
I was thinking it was a home as well.
Okay.
If you look at a beacon that shows a picture of the house.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Right, any additional questions? All right, if there's no additional questions from the council, we will go ahead and open it up to the public for the first time. Would anyone like to speak regarding this resolution? For the second time, would anyone like to speak? For the third time, would anyone like to speak? We'll close the public hearing. I would entertain a resolution declaring property without public purpose, waive Planning Commission review, and authorize sale of 917 South Broadway Avenue. Counsel?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Anderson, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Counselor Olson. Any additional questions from the council? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item B is a resolution accepting donations as presented to the city of Albert Lee. The city of Albert Lee is generally authorized to accept donations pursuant to Minnesota statute, Section 465-03, for the benefit of its citizens. Staff recommends acceptance of the following donations as submitted by the council for review and approval. Chevron Renewable Energy Group of Glenville, presented to the Albert Lee Fire Department. All right, is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Christensen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Anderson, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item nine is the mayor and council reports, and we will start tonight with Counselor Olson, Ward Four.
All right, don't have much tonight, but I would like to congratulate all the fall sports teams. Football had a wonderful season, volleyball did well. The girls soccer team made their first trip to state in either 11 or 14 years, I don't remember which one. But they got to the first round and lost to the number-one rated team in the state. So great memory for those girls. And I'd encourage everyone to get out in the winter season, hockey, basketball, wrestling. Get out and cheer on those athletes if you get a chance. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Ward Five, Counselor Van Beek.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, next Tuesday, tomorrow, I have an HRA meeting. Ward items, I have nothing to report at this time. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with John Shipper on the Eddie Cochran Festival for next year, looking at a major motorcycle component. And later in the month, I've got a meeting with Ride for Heroes to help keep supporting this area for our local veterans. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Ward Six, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. No ward items right now, and there is an HRA meeting tomorrow, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Ward One, Counselor Christensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, it's been a very busy couple of weeks for me. The Senior Center has now met their advisory group to review three proposals for a new facility. There were a really great turnout of members of the Senior Center and its advisory council that met, first to review the proposals and the week after to tour two of the facilities that have made proposals. The group will be meeting later this week to further discuss those options, and we look forward to seeing what comes out of that. Also, with regard to our seniors, the age-friendly Freeborn County group met. They've got so many wonderful things going on. One of the things that's going to be happening is they're bringing back Tech Tuesday, sponsored by AT&amp;T, so we thank AT&amp;T for doing that. What they'll do is they'll have people who are knowledgeable, who can help you with your laptop or with your cellphone or whatever you're having troubles with, because we all know that if you don't have a young person around you to show you how to do it, sometimes it's kind of difficult. Also, the National Vitality Center, which is the, kind of the funding arm for our Blue Zones project, met and started a, kind of a planning process, trying to get refocused, and came up with some really great ideas for kind of re-engaging with the Blue Zones project and bringing it back to its importance within our community. And our mayor even spoke, we did a strategic planning meeting a week ago Saturday, he talked about that, and I was really happy to hear his support for the Blue Zones, saying, this is something, the first certified Blue Zone city in the United States. It's ours, and we need to keep being kind of in control of that and making the most of it for our community, because people do come here and know about Albert Lee because of that project. One of its subgroups, the Work Site Wellness Committee, is meeting. They too are very active and have a lot of things going on. And I guess that's about it.
All right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ward Two, Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did have one ward item, I've turned it over to the chief of police, which he's going to look into. I've also, that's the only ward item I have. Last Tuesday, I was able, I took a day off from work and went on that Freeborn Mall Electric Bus Tour. First of all, we met, we met at seven o'clock there. They gave us a tour of Freeborn Mall, and then we had a little conversation with some of the people that work there. And from there, we went to La Crosse, where the headquarters for the Dairyland Power Company is. And there, they also gave us, you know, a tour of their facility. And I tell you what, it's quite the facility. I mean, it was really informational. I look at it different now, and every time I flip the light on, I think about things differently because of what I saw. And then after we got done there, on the way up to Alma, Wisconsin, where the power station is, we ate a box lunch on the bus, which I think the bus drive was about an hour and 10 minutes. And when we got to the power station, they took us through us, they sat us down and kind of went over it. They took us and showed us the control panel that they have for this whole Dairyland Power. And this is five states, part of five states, and this board goes, it's probably twice as wide as this room, and it's continuous from one corner to the other. And there's, there was only like five people in there, and they're monitoring all of this stuff throughout southern Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, Illinois. I think they even have a little bit of it in South Dakota, I think they have. But it's amazing what they can, what they can see just by that board. They can tell when stuff is offline, they can tell when stuff, there's issues. They have a great communication center there. And then we went through the facility, and it's really unbelievable that as we drove into the facility, there's like two mountains of coal. I forgot to say this is a coal-burning power plant. And it's probably, it's unbelievable, the amount of coal they had there. And going through that plant and some of the things that they have there, the burners, the generator, I mean, they're huge. We were, I don't know, fortunate or unfortunate, depends on how you look, that they were, they were shut down at the time that we were there. And the reason I say unfortunate, because when that plant is running, there can be places in that plant, as you go through, it can be up to 100 degrees. And so we were able to go through the whole facility, and like I said, it was truly a learning experience. And I'm really grateful that I took the opportunity to go, and I want to thank the people out at Freeborn Mall Electric for putting this on, and also the people at Dairyland Power who welcomed us and was more than happy to go through their day and what they do and how they do it. With that, I do have an HRA meeting tomorrow, which I am, I'm sure we'll discuss it at our next meeting. With that, Your Honor, that'll do it.
All right, thank you. Ward Three, Counselor Howland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Counselor Christensen already mentioned, just since our last meeting, attended the city council retreat, which all of us did. city council retreat, which all of us did, and hashed out over a day coming up with plans for a strategic plan for the city. So I want to thank all those involved in, in putting that together, and all the city staff that were there and participated in, in those conversations, and excited to see what we come up with here in the future. Other than that, last week, attended the Park and Rec Board meeting, and, and it was out at City Arena, and so the Park and Rec Board got a tour of, of some of the progress that's happened out at the arena. There is ice now in the main arena, in Ice Room Arena, so the ice went in a little over a week ago, and it's getting used quite a bit. I can't remember how many hours they said of ice time every day, but thankful for all of the user groups that use the ice for their patience and understanding. I know some of the teams are having to go in there, I think it's like five o'clock in the morning to, to be able to, to use the ice until we get that second sheet of ice on there. But the ice is up and running, it is with the temporary chillers until they get the main chiller in there, in place here, hopefully in the next few months. But second sheet of ice is expected to hopefully be in Coal Strip Arena. I think the plan is in January. Let's cross our fingers that that does not get pushed back any more than it already has. But yeah, it's amazing how many groups utilize the city arena every day. There's everything from the high school teams, girls and boys hockey, to youth hockey, to figure skating, the Waldorf College team, and many others that are using that ice every day. So kudos to staff for scheduling all of that ice time and, and making sure that everybody's as happy as they can be when it comes to that. Also, some of the improvements made to the arena, I think people, once they step in, are really going to kind of step back and say, wow, this is really nice. So the lobby that, the lobby extension that's been added, wasn't quite finished when we were there last week, but it's, it's coming along really nice, and once it's all up and running and has all the furnishings and everything, I think it's, people are going to be really proud of that. And as well as some of the efficiencies made in, like the skate rentals and that office space areas is all positive. So all good things out at the city arena, and won't be long, and there'll be hockey games starting pretty quick. That's it, Your Honor.
That's good to hear. I know there's a lot of groups that are awfully happy to have that sheet of ice back in action, so that's good. All right. My report on October 14th, I had Alita Project Review Meeting, and then on the 15th, the city manager and I met with a few members of the watershed committee to talk about some different things that we're working on together. On the 15th, which was a Wednesday, I joined the Crime Victims Crisis Center on their walk from Central Park on over to New Denmark Park. And on the 16th, I went out to the St. Croix Hospice group, I met with a number of their staff, and, and then got to be the judge for their pumpkin fest. So they had all decorated some pumpkins, so we had a little fun with that. But a nice group of people, there were probably close to 30 employees there, so that's nice to see. So they employ quite a few. Our executive, or our group at Alita is also beginning the executive search, so working on that with DDA. We got together on the 17th and, and started that process. On the 18th, as a few other members had mentioned, we had our strategic planning meeting. I'm hoping great things come out of that. I think we had some good ideas of that day, and I think we kind of come to a consensus on what some of the important things that the city should be working on. So it'll be fun to get the, those things going and, and keep this momentum going that we built in this city. And then on the 20th, we had a groundbreaking for a new location, a new building for Affinity Credit Union, which will be out on East Main. So it was fun to be out there and visit with the local group that works there, plus they had people come in from some of their other home office and things like that. So that was good to see. You probably saw some dirt start getting moved out there over the last few days, and you'll see a building going up there shortly. On Tuesday, the 21st, the Chamber had their annual meeting. Congratulations to Cargill, our Large Employer of the Year, to the Children's Center, our Median Employee of the Year, Employer of the Year, and then also the Three Oak Vineyard and Winery, which is our Small Employer of the Year. So congratulations to them. It was a great program that night, we had a lot of fun. People got to meet the new Chamber Director, so that was, that was fun to get to meet her and just hear her speak about some ideas going forward. So if you get a chance, stop by and visit with the new Chamber Director. We'll be going out and hopefully doing some calls together with some of our local businesses. On the 22nd, I had an interview with Peter Cox, who was with NPR now, and he came down and talking about how cities and counties, especially in rural Minnesota, are adapting to these huge budget increases that we're all faced with right now. Interesting note on Peter Cox, he got his start at the Albert Lee Tribune, I believe, back around 99 to 2000, somewhere right in there, and also attended college at St. Olive, and he was naming off some of the Albert Leans that he went to school with, so that was kind of interesting to chat with him. So that should be on their website coming up. 10/22, we had a bonding committee meeting, so Engineer Steve Yonkey and several others on there, talking about what we need to put together for our bonding meeting coming up here in a week. We'll be having, having the House Bonding Committee down here to talk about our wastewater treatment plant. So we want to make sure that we can, you know, get a good presentation to them and just show how important this project is for Albert Lee and the surrounding area. And then I would just like to echo Counselor Olson's comments there on some of our sports teams. It was exciting to watch the girls soccer go off to state. Pretty tough that they got to play Providence Academy, first game, and they have a heck of a team. So anyway, but it's fun to see them get there. Soccer, we've got Andrew Scholl, who will be going up to state, so good to see him or on the cross-country team, so that's good. And then the football team, won their first game, come up a little short in the second game, but what a year. And so just exciting watching all our fall sports. So get out, support these kids. As Counselor Olson said, a lot of winter activities that'll be starting up. I think we have about a two-week break right now, and then we'll start up with all the winter activities. So get out, support those kids, very, very important. And then what's going on in the calendar here? Wednesday, October 29th, will be the last farmer's market of the season, so get out there and see what they have yet and get some goodies. Thursday, October 30th, the spooktacular Trick or Treat event downtown Albert Lee from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at participating businesses. And then after Trick or Treating downtown on Thursday, you can head to the History Center of Freeborn County for the Creepy Doll Scavenger Hunt. This is a free event and goes from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 1031 Bridge Avenue. And that is the end of my report. Item 10 is the city manager report, and all we're going to say tonight is the city manager is off at a conference, he's learning a few things about housing, so hopefully he brings back some good ideas and thoughts for us. So he'll be back at our next meeting, and I, I think he gets back to town Wednesday. So with that, we'll move along to item 11 is approval of claims. A is a resolution approving claims, and one is a presentation of claims over 25,000. We have $57,217.35 to Freeborn Mall Electric Cooperative Electric Service and the Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then $57,804.15 to Platinum Plumbing Solutions. This is pay estimate 14 for lead service line replacement project. We have $72,892.27 to Jensen Excavating and Trucking. This is pay estimate five for the Everhart Street and Water Construction Job, 2413. We have $107,114.40 to Neil Electric Solutions, pay estimate one, AWOS replacement project. And then we have $148,092.79 to Midwest Injection Inc., this is bio-solid removal. $198,021.56 to Brennan Construction, this is pay estimate number seven, the recreational facilities project, the arena lobby. And then lastly, we've got $203,769.40 to Brennan Construction. This is pay estimate six for the recreational facilities project, again, the arena library, lobby. Counsel?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Baker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Van Beek. Any questions or further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 12 is adjournment.
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Motion by Counselor Howland, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Anderson. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.